It's 6:00 PM and I would like to call this Fairfield City Council meeting to order. And Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes. Councilmember Carr?
Here.
Councilmember Panduro?
Here.
Councilmember Tonison?
Here.
Councilmember Vicaro?
Here.
Councilmember Williams is absent. Vice Mayor Bertani?
Here.
And Mayor Moy is absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Our invocation this evening is Senior Pastor Joe Smith from Calvary Baptist Church. Hi, Joe. Good, how are you? Good, thank you.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we're so thankful to be able to live and work in this city. And Lord, tonight, as we come together, we pray for our leadership, we pray for our council, we pray that God first will give them wisdom as they tackle some of the issues that we face in this place. Lord, we ask that you would give them patience as they work through in different opposing views at times. And God, we ask that you would give them courage, that in the times of decisions to be made when it may not feel like it's going the right way, that, God, you've given the courage to know what to do and to do it. So, Lord, we pray for this panel tonight, we pray for our city, we ask for its protection, we ask for its blessings as we move forward. So, Lord, we once again ask your blessings upon this time tonight, for it's your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Joe. Councilmember Tonison, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. And now, turning to council reports. Councilmember Carr, would you like to start us off?
Okay, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Real quick, I'm not going to take too much time. I just wanted to say, our meeting on September 12th, which was a general plan meeting, I think we, you know, got a few things accomplished. You know, sometimes I think people come into our chamber thinking that, you know, that we're going to disagree about a lot of things, and sometimes, as we walk out, we realize maybe we don't disagree with as much as maybe certain people think. So, I think it was a good meeting. There's a lot more work to do, obviously, but I think that the future is a little, is brighter from having a meeting like that. And, you know, any time that you can, you know, get together and, you know, meeting of the minds, I guess, as you could say, then that's always a good thing. So, besides that, I say I'm looking forward to going to League of Cities tomorrow through Friday with some of my colleagues. I know it's going to be, it's always exciting to get to meet other alleged, other council people from throughout the state of California. And also go to the sessions where you learn a lot. I mean, I've been going to League of Cities for 14 years, to tell you how long I've been on the council for. And you really do learn a lot from other cities, maybe some things they're doing right, maybe things we could do better. So, it's in Sacramento, so it's a quick, quick ride up, so it should be good. Anyway, that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tonison, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I just want to mention that we had the Matt Garcia Day on Saturday, the 16th. It was, it was well-attended, there was a lot of vendors. And coming up on March 9th, okay, October, in October is the golf tournament. I think it's in a cup, isn't it, the 9th? So, that's always a huge event, they always fill up. But this year, we're doing it at Rancho Solano. We've been doing it at other places, and we're back in Fairfield, and I'm happy to see that, and looking forward to the event. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Panduro, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to just report, I attended. So, as the city of Fairfield, one of, I think, our shining gems is that we have Travis Air Force Base within our city limits. And we always talk about, you know, we have to protect it, and we support it, and we do. And so, this past Saturday, Travis Air Force Base celebrated their 80th anniversary, and they had over 600 people in attendance. So, everything from airmen, honorary commanders, base leadership, as well as elected officials, and just, you know, spouses and partners. And it was a beautiful event. They always do a fantastic job showcasing the power of Travis and Team Travis. It's always awesome to see all the young airmen there, and all the older, you know, the past members that have retired, to hear their stories. And we got to sit with a commander who has moved 11 times in service to our country. And so, to be able to thank these people in person for their service, to protect us and to serve us abroad and locally, is just an amazing part of being able to go to these events. So, it was a beautiful night, and I'm happy that I was able to attend and represent the city of Fairfield. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Carr, your report, please.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. It'll be short. I apologize for missing our last meeting. I was sick, I was down with pneumonia, I'm just getting back on my feet, so I haven't did a whole lot. However, I did go to the listening tour we had out at Paradise Valley Estates, and what a beautiful place to retire. It's the first time I had seen it. And very well-attended, it was a real good meeting. And I also attended the Matt Garcia Day and saw the cars, and downtown was wonderful. So, that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you. And my report is brief as well. I just want to thank everybody out at Paradise Valley Estates who helped us have a great listening tour on Saturday, which was very well-attended, and we were informed of some transportation issues out at Paradise Valley Estates in terms of employees and others being able to use public transit to access Paradise Valley Estates. And so, we are speaking with the STA and other, other folks who have an interest in or are able to help us with that. We have not planned the follow-up meeting at Paradise Valley Estates yet, but it will be another meeting where we talk about some follow-up issues, including the transportation one, within the next couple of months or so. We anticipate being able to go back to, back out to Paradise Valley Estates and have that meeting. So, you know, thank you for a really gracious and robust conversation, very useful. I do want to announce also that we have scheduled our Rolling Hills Town Hall meeting on the P-file matter. That meeting is going to take place on Saturday, October 14th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM at Rolling Hills Elementary School, and, which is on Hillborne, and the city will be doing a advertising campaign to make sure that we get the word out on social media, on our website, et cetera. But it's really going to have, it's really going to be an opportunity for neighbors to talk to neighbors, because therein lies the solution to this problem. I think that, and not even a problem, it's a challenge, it's an opportunity. It's an opportunity to make our community where we want to live, people support what they help to create. So, we're looking forward to a great town hall meeting on Saturday, October 14th, 9:00 AM to 11:00, and there'll be more information coming your way about, about that meeting. And that is all I have right now. Mr. City Manager?
I have nothing to report this evening, Madam Vice Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, your report, please.
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to thank Deputy City Clerk Esther Beavers for filling in for me on September 5th, as I was ill, and, and also David Lim, our City Attorney, last week, for the study session. I appreciate the help. I coordinated a trash mob on Saturday with some students from ARMEA and some residents, and it was in Cordelia, and it was very successful, and I appreciated all the help. And lastly, we still have two openings, two seats are available on the Measure P Oversight Committee Committee, Oversight Committee, sorry. The committee consists of five members, and the deadline for applying, it doesn't say here. Well, just contact cityclerk@fairfield.ca.gov for more information. And then, we still have two seats available on the Youth Commission, and that will be, that's for a term starting January 1st. So, that's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we now turn to the Housing Authority. Madam Clerk, please.
No, it'll actually be Presentations first, is the...
Oh, on, on my, I think it says, the Housing Authority, and then Presentations.
Mine is the opposite.
So, I'm assuming that somebody...
Yeah.
Do we want to do Presentations first?
Yeah, that's how I show it on the, the order of the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Presentation one, poem and proclamation declaring National Hispanic Heritage Month, presented by poet, our Fairfield poet laureate Suzanne Bruce, and Councilmember Doris Panduro.
Thank you, Karen, and good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council and audience, and thank you for allowing me to share poetry again. I took a very different approach with this poem. Although there is a vast and vibrant presence of Hispanic culture in our community and in our country, I wanted to write more than just cliche images of margaritas and mariachi bands, although I like both of those. I wanted to express the struggles and the risk that people take when they make a choice to come to the United States. When I wrote this poem, I am speaking from the voice of an individual who wants to come to the United States, but in her mind, she has fear. Yet she continues to dream. With encouraged optimism, we must celebrate courageous choices, revel the tremendous and splendid contributions of all people. Sueños, Dreams. This morning, I visualized my cultural past, how ethnic roots took hold, stretched to share vibrant traditions, how struggles were fought with desire, rewards the blossoming tree. I want that community who gathered, celebration of guitars, strings sounding joy, as sparkling night stars sing. But in my country, it is no secret who rules the twilight sky. Leaders ignite fear. I want to leave. My mind dull and dark, my scared self floats in abyss. My dreams want to surface, want to take hold and grow, want to embrace the light. Yet cries that lie inside me explode doubt. The weight of worry burns like fire. I wonder if I could douse its fury. Must I relinquish a soul in exchange for a reason? No, I must live my strength, allow my dreams to transform. Upon waking, excitement will meet me there, with belief in my heart, with colors as vibrant as possibilities. And my partner in collaboration is now going to do the poem in Spanish.
Ahora en español. Sueños. Esta mañana visualice mi pasado cultural como las raíces étnicas se afizaron, se extendieron para compartir tradiciones vibrantes. Como las luchas fueron combatidas con deseo, recompensa el árbol forestiente. Quiero esa comunidad que se unió, celebración de guitarras, cuerdas sonando alegría, como estrellas brillantes de la noche cantan. Pero en mi país, no es ningún secreto quien encubre en el cielo. Los líderes encienden el miedo, quiero irme. Mi mente aburrida y oscura, mi misma asustada flota en el albismo. Mis sueños quieren salir a la superficie, quiero tomar el control y crecer, quiero abrazar a la luz. Sin embargo, los llantos que están dentro de mí explotan la duda. El peso de la precaución quema como fuego, me pregunto si puedo apagar su furia. Debo renunciar a una alma a cambio de una razón? No, debo vivir mi fuerza, permitir que mis sueños se transformen. Al despertar, la emoción me encontrará ahí, con creencia mi corazón, con colores tan vibrantes como la posibilidad. Gracias. And so, now, the proclamation. I'm gonna, in the past, I've asked to present this to an organization or individual who has exemplified the theme of Hispanic Heritage Month. And so, this year, I'm honored to present it to Ole Health, and with us, we have Riquetado from Ole Health. So, I'll read it, and then Ricky, you can come up, and then he can share a few words about Ole Health and the work that they're doing here in our community. So, whereas Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th through October 15th by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas the observation started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded in 1988 by President Ronald Reagan to cover the entire month. It was enacted into law on August 17th, 1988, on the approval of Public Law 100-402. And whereas September 15th is significant because it is the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries such as Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their Independence Day on September 16th and 18th, respectively. Whereas, more than 15 million Hispanics live in the state of California, the largest racial or ethnic group in the state, and more than 34,000 live in Fairfield, representing 29% of the population. A diverse group with roots throughout Latin America and beyond, many Hispanic Californians also trace their heritage to the original indigenous communities of Latin America and Africa. During National Hispanic Heritage Month, we honor and recognize all in the Hispanic community who helped build our state and city. They are teachers, business owners, council members, scientists, soldiers, farmworkers, first responders, artists, activists, colleagues, and friends. Hispanic Californians make valuable contributions to our neighborhoods, communities, and every sector of the economy. We are a more excellent and vibrant place because of them. Now, therefore, I, Catherine Cap Moy, Mayor of the city of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2023, as National Hispanic Heritage Month with the 2023 theme Prosperity, Power, and Progress, recognizing the significant achievements of the Hispanic community in economic and political industries. And so, with the theme Prosperity, Power, and Progress, again, Ole Health is here, they are a part of our community, and if you know their story, they are a big part of creating access to, and reducing barriers to healthcare. So, I want them just to share, Ricky to share a few words about who he is and what Ole Health has done, but this is for you, my friend.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Let me get my phone out here really quick. Dear Vice Mayor, City Council, I am Riquetado, Community Outreach Manager of Ole Health, and on behalf of Ole Health, it's an honor to accept this proclamation for the Hispanic Heritage Month that is celebrated typically mid, mid-September through mid-October. Again, thank you, Councilmember Doris Panduro, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. Ole Health was started in 1972 by Napa County farmworkers that saw really a need to have adequate access to healthcare in a culturally competent manner. Today, we provide, and we've grown, to provide primary healthcare services. In Napa County, we service over 32,000 individuals. Since our extension to Fairfield in 2015 and 2017, we've been able to serve 8,000 members of our community here in Fairfield, again, regardless of background, insurance or non-insurance, immigration status or non-immigration status. We opened our, again, our first healthcare here in Fairfield in 2015 in East Fairfield, and now, we are also in West Fairfield, servicing our community. These last couple of years, we've been at over 60 or 70 community events, presentations, parades, you name it, here specifically in the city of Fairfield, again, continuing to expand our access to healthcare. We've also been able to provide free food distributions and partners with Food is Free Bay Area, Fairfield Too Soon, Adult School, and many other partners, servicing over 150 to 200 families in the city of Fairfield every third Friday of the month, from, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. So, don't, make, make sure you guys come out. Soon, we will also be expanding our healthcare services, not just in our brick-and-order clinics, but again, in the notion of providing access to care, we will be coming really soon with our mobile health unit, providing services to those most in need here in Fairfield as well. Again, thank you all so much, city of Fairfield, thank you, Doris, and thank you, comunidad. Gracias.
Councilmember Scott Tonison to Nanette Shimaya, daughter of the Golden West.
Hello, and this is the Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd. Whereas the Constitution of the United States, the guardian of our liberties, is a product of reflection and choice, embodying the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated by, to rule by law, not men. Whereas September 17th marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. Whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this memorable anniversary and to the patriotic exercises that will commemorate this occasion. Whereas Public Law Number 915 guarantees the issuing of proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through September 23rd as National, as Constitution Week. Therefore, I, Cap Moy, Mayor of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, September 23rd, 1923. And I'll present this to Nanette.
No, I'm starting. Nanette couldn't come, so...
Like to say the words?
Yes, I could.
Hi.
How appropriate that I'm here. I'm Starla Luna Studer. My grandfather actually came from Mexico, and he became a U.S. citizen. It was important. And at the time that he did it, he had four boys at war in the military, and the judge came over to him and said, "You deserve this. Let me shake your hand." And that was a long time ago. Okay. I'm so nervous, guys, I'm sorry.
This is a lot.
Nothing to be nervous about. Okay. I would, first, I would love to thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor and the City Council for doing this. It's so important. The Daughters of the American Revolution is a service organization, and many, many years ago, they are the ones that started and pushed to get it through for the Constitution Week. Starting on the actual day, September 17th, many years ago, when it was signed, 236 years ago, by Eisenhower. And they got it into, it took an act of Congress, and they got it pushed through. I'm not going to read word for word, you did an excellent job. But it is important. I've had, for me, I've had my father serve in three wars, I've had my son serve in war, and they defend it. They defend our rights to believe the way we want to believe and to protect it. So the Constitution, for me, means a lot. I am the recording secretary for them, but then my co-chair of what I do is service to veterans, and because we have the base, we get to do a lot for them. And right now, we're working also hand-in-hand in the commemoration for the Vietnam vets, to welcome them home and, because their 50-year anniversary is coming. The Constitution, it lays it out for everybody that comes here, and it is so important that we honor it. And for us, City of Fairfield, thank you so much for taking this time and doing this for us. It's an important thing for your city, and it shows. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Pam Bertani.
A centurion. We're celebrating a centurion this evening. I was so honored when Ms. Tular Williams' family reached out to me and asked if the City of Fairfield would recognize our centurion, Ms. Tular Williams. And I let them know that absolutely, positively, unequivocally, without a doubt, absolutely. So I have a certificate of congratulations here. I know that her family is in the audience, so I'm going to ask you to please come on up so that everybody in the city can see y'all. And you know what? Thank you. Come on over. And, and I just want to say thank you for loving Ms. Tular this much, to make this happen, to care enough to make this happen and to celebrate in this big way. So if you guys will just come around here.
All right.
That's right, hit the wall. Exactly. So, so thank you for including the City of Fairfield in this wonderful celebration of life, 100 years and still going. So this is a certificate of congratulations presented to Ms. Tular Williams, born on September 20th, 1923, and 100 years young. Congratulations on this extraordinary milestone, and that's an understatement if I do say so myself. That's a lot of milestones in there. May this celebration be a joyful reminder of, if Ms. Tular Williams was here right now, she, she might say, a reminder of living right. Amen to that. Mm-hmm. Amen to that. A joyful reminder of living right and a happy addition to fond memories of birthdays past. This is signed by our mayor, Mayor Catherine Moy. Thank you, family, for letting us share in this celebration. We truly appreciate it. And is Ms. Tular looking right now? Or is she?
I hope so. We're celebrating her birthday.
Let's give her a rousing round of applause. Congratulations on 100 years. Woo! There you go. And now, if, if a family member would like to step forward and say a few, few words, please do, we also have her City of Fairfield badge there and some good jelly bellies for her and her certificate. And I'll hold this while you sit. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dolores Williams, and this is my mom that we're celebrating, Tular Williams. This is such an honor to have you guys do this for her. My mom would like to thank the City Council and the Vice Mayor for doing this for her. We are celebrating her this weekend, which is going to be a big affair. So this is, just puts the icing on the cake, and we just thank you. Thank you very much.
And we will take a picture to memorialize this event. Everybody can come on in.
Congratulations. Thank you.
There's to 100 lovely years and counting. Okay, so now we turn to public comment.
Yes. Persons wishing to address the City Council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item, if you're online, please use the Raise Your Hand feature or press star nine on your phone. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item. And our first speaker is Jeff Traeger.
Okay, Jeff.
Hi, Jeff.
Who's that? Oh, hi, Ms., Mrs. Vice Mayor and members of the City Council. First of all, I'd like to let you know what's going on at the Downtown Theater in Fairfield in the next couple of months. We have the Secret Garden, which will go through October 1st, and then in October, we have the Rocky Horror Show. And you can get your tickets by going to downtowntheater.com. In November, though, we have a very, very special I'm Every Woman, which is a tribute to Whitney Houston at 60, with Janis Maxie Reed, who performed with Stevie Wonder and Lionel Richie, and she's back for another one of her great shows. On the 8th of la, of this month, we finished our music series, our Friday Night Music Series, over on the county lawn. We went out to four areas in this, in the city. I thought it was very, very successful. We did nine shows, five downtown, and we went out to five parks in the city. And Rosalind Pugh, I handed off to Ran, handed off to Rosalind for doing a wonderful job. We had a nice, nice turnout this year. And then on the 23rd of this, this Saturday, the Fairfield Solano Rotary Club, and they're having a fundraiser for the Solano youth. They do a wonderful job of supporting the youth in Solano County, and it's at the college, Solano College, at 7:00 with the premier Super Diamond, Neil Diamond Tribute Band. And if you, if you remember the Jersey Boys, they'll, that's what they are. They're an excellent group, and you can get your tickets by going to ftpresence.com. I've got flyers out in the, in the lobby for anybody else that would like to. But they do a great job every year of, of supporting the youth in Solano County, and I give them a lot of credit. So that's it. That's all I got.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Our next speaker is Alex Lunine.
Madam Vice Mayor, City Council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Again, my name is Alex Lunine, and I'm the Resilient Communities Program Manager at Sustainable Solano. I have come up here speaking of our air quality program based in Fairfield before, and due to the haziness we see outside due to wildfire smoke, I do believe that talking about air quality, especially as we enter our fire season, has never been more important. In particular, I'd like to promote three of our upcoming air quality-oriented events that we have over this next month. On September 24th, we're hosting our second Air Quality Focus Roundtable. We hosted our first in June, and during this roundtable conversation, we had six community members come to discuss the particular air pollutants that are of note to them and how air quality impacts their daily lives. We hope to facilitate these conversations, to continue to have a dialogue about air quality issues, and to prepare ourselves for the creation of a community action plan in winter, probably 2024, so January, February. And again, having City Council members there would be great to help facilitate that dialogue and, you know, hear directly back from your, you know, your community members. And that's September 24th from 12:00 to 1:30 at the Fairfield Community Center. On September 30th, we're hosting a tree care workshop at City Church from 10:00 to 12:00. And trees and green spaces are incredibly important in terms of helping to purify air pollutants in our air and also helping to reduce the urban heat island effect. So this workshop will help residents and folks who come to learn how to take care of their trees and also how to plant complementary plants to ensure their long-term health. Finally, on October 8th, we're facilitating a DIY air filter workshop led by Dr. Nick Spada from the UC Davis Air Quality Research Center. During this workshop, he'll be teaching folks how to build a Corsi Rosenthal box, which is proven to help reduce indoor air pollutants, and especially as we enter our fire season, that's never been more important. And during this workshop, we'll be able to give away 10 free kits to residents of Fairfield to build their own as well. And I have flyers up here if any council members would like one, and if anybody here attending would like one. Other than that, you could see these events and register at sustainablesolano.org/events. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment speakers, Madam Clerk? Yes, Ron Colty is next.
Madam Vice Mayor, I'm kind of disappointed that the mayor isn't here because most of my comments were going to be directed towards her.
I'm sorry to disappoint.
Eh, I'm not disappointed.
I'm sure she's watching.
Yeah, and then I was going to talk on the P-file, but I found out some more information, and I'm going to wait till the hometown meeting that we have for that. I'm here because of, I'd like to know what the city's objections are with the Flannery Group, other than Travis.
Mr. City Attorney, are we, can we talk about this now? I mean, it's not an agendized item, so.
No, at this time, sir, it's public comment, so you can make comments to the council, but by law, the council can't respond to you because they can only address agendized items. So you can give them comments, and then they can direct staff to get you answers and follow up with you, but they can't answer you right now in the dais.
Okay. I just wanted to let you know, I read an article that the mayor put out that basically said that that project would take place over her dead body. I just want to let you know, if you don't know who I am, I'm with the operating engineers. I'm chairman of their PAC committee, and we're probably the largest PAC committee in Solano and Napa County. We have 40,000 members. I'm not only the chairman of that PAC committee, but I'm on the Board of Directors for the operating engineers and for their credit union. So I have a lot of people backing me up. I just want to let you know that after a meeting that we had today, that the operating engineers will be meeting with the various building organizations, probably, I think, Building Trades is tomorrow, Central Labor Council will be next week, I believe, and we will be asking them to support us in supporting the development. We see it as virtually thousands of thousands of jobs over the course of many, many years and billions of dollars that could eventually, it's going to raise property values around here, which is going to increase property taxes, which will benefit the city and all the different projects that we have. And with the mayor, I wasn't real sure. She said, you know, like I said, she's going to fight it.
You have 30 seconds, sir.
Yeah. I've just, we have decided that, you know, we're probably going to be fighting her tooth and nail on this, and we just wanted to make you aware of it since, since she's not here. It's not going to be an easy slam dunk. And as far as Travis goes, it won't matter, they're not going anywhere. If they were going to go anywhere, they'd have done it when the windmills went up. The windmills are still there, and so is Travis. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And our last speaker is William Penn.
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor.
Good evening.
Council members, citizens of Fairfield. This is, I'm following up on an idea that I'd given at a previous City Council meeting. This is the outline for that project that, that I had suggested, suggested, and these are, you know, suggested ways of approaching this. It's for, it's a, for a fundraiser for city league football scholarship. To raise funds via an art auction comprised of local artists, proceeds go towards scholarship for children of financially challenged households to ensure their participation in city league youth football. And then some steps to be taken is artists to be obtained by running corresponding ads through the Daily Republic and local cable access station. And timing is everything on this. You know, I could, let me finish with this, with, I had an idea of how, how it would best go over, you know, looking at it, looking at it from the outside in. The advertisement to be, to take place by late October, early November. Auction items to be submitted by artists by January 3rd. Gallery to be displayed by January 15th, 2024, and run for the duration of the NFL playoffs. So I would like coincide with the football to gain, gain more attention. Final, final bids to be processed the week before the, the Super Bowl. I implore you all to consider fast-tracking this project immediately. I understand the practicality of tabling an item for a following year, but please consider the at-risk children that would fall through the cracks for this upcoming season. List below are a few of the immediate needs to accomplish this task. A coordinator would need to be assigned. Create a committee to discuss logistics and potential venues. A couple of the venues that I had in mind would be.
You have 30 seconds, sir.
Would be the Downtown Theater, or if we could correlate with the County Board of Supervisors, the government building with the, the flow of traffic there. I just like you all to consider this. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. My contact information is there.
Thank you, Mr. Penn.
I don't have any other speaker cards, and there are no hands raised online.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So now we turn to the Housing Authority?
Yes. The holding of a joint meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority entitles the council members to receive additional compensation of $35 for attending this joint meeting. I'll take role. Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Panduro?
Here.
Commissioner Tonison?
Here.
Commissioner Vicaro?
Here.
Vice Chair Bertani?
Here.
Okay. And the item is on consent, so I don't need to read it.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Actually, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. You do need to ask if there's any public comment, if anyone wants to pull the item.
I don't have any cards. Did anyone want to speak on this item, on the Housing Authority item? Okay.
I will now entertain a motion.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Okay, and now we will reconvene the regular City Council meeting.
And regular consent. All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the City Council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
Thank you. Do we have any public speakers on any of the items?
I don't have any cards. Did anyone want to speak on any of the items on consent?
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar. Thank you. And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries unanimously. And now we will move to new business, item 16. Yes.
Item 16, investment grade audit, IGA update for the city of Fairfield sites for energy conservation. And our presenter is Marisa Campion, Senior Management Analyst from Public Works.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Vice Mayor.
Good evening.
Hi. Marisa Campion, Senior Management Analyst, Project Manager for this initiative that's currently underway, here to provide a brief refresher on the initiative, and also remind council that it really speaks to the council's direction to look for opportunities to reduce costs over time while also allowing us to address deferred maintenance repairs. I have with me this evening Carolyn and Jason with Will Dan, and I will go ahead and turn it over for them to present. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. My name's Jason Boyd. I'm a program manager with Will Dan. I'm joined by Carolyn Kiesner. And, you know, as Marisa said, we're partnering with the city to implement your energy savings and infrastructure upgrade program, and we're here today to give you an update on the progress so far and what to expect from the process moving forward. Okay, sorry, how's the audio? All right. So a brief introduction first of Will Dan. We're founded and headquartered here in California, been serving California municipalities since 1964, and we've had the honor of working with and serving the city of Fairfield for over 22 years now with energy services as well as engineering and financial services. And we are currently working with the city to implement this program, which is focused on upgrades to your facilities and your infrastructure that will save energy and provide other energy-related improvements. And before I dive in, I would like to just take a moment to recognize your staff, who from the very start have been great to work with. We've been working with your teams in public works, engineering, IT, facilities, parks and rec, and finance, and everyone's been very engaged and very helpful. In particular, I want to give a quick shout out to your facilities team. Despite being a small team with a very big workload, they've been working very hard to give us the access and the insights we need to do our work on your behalf. So one of the first things we did was working with staff to identify the main objectives for your program. And, you know, those are listed here. First of all, just getting a good understanding of the current baseline of the energy usage within the city, finding ways to maximize energy savings as well as operational savings, and addressing some of the deferred maintenance issues and using that as a way to further reduce maintenance costs for the city, as well as improving the performance and the reliability of the systems, making your facilities more usable and more comfortable, and creating resilient infrastructure and backup power solutions to critical facilities such as your servers and communications, and also leveraging those savings that are achieved through this program to help the city complete other related capital improvement needs. And ultimately, all of this is to help support the city's long-term sustainability goals. And as we've gone through this process and started the analysis of your facilities, there are a few potential scope items that we've identified so far, namely upgrading to LED lighting, making improvements to your heating and ventilation and air conditioning systems, bringing solar PV, solar photovoltaics to the city, making improvements to the dehumidifier system at the Allenwood Aquatic Center, and making improvements to the central plant serving your civic center here. And I would like to take just a moment to talk about how all of this will be paid for. First and foremost, one of the great things about these energy programs is that they focus on ways to save the city money by reducing energy usage and reducing the related maintenance and operation costs. And additionally, these programs can then leverage some of those long-term savings and combine it with financing in order to bring additional capital to the table. Now, I should say, we're not acting as financial advisors here, but we will help the city identify some creative funding options for the city to consider. Some of those options include energy-specific, low-interest financing, state and federal grants, as well as incentives from your utilities. And we are already engaging with your finance team, and we'll be exploring multiple options as the projects are developed. So just a quick walkthrough of the process. So we started the first phase of the investment grade audit at the end of June of this year, and we are nearing completion of that first phase, which is really just focused on understanding your utility spend, familiarizing ourselves with your facilities, and identifying potential scopes for the projects. In Phase Two of the investment grade audit, we will be further developing those scopes as well as developing those various funding solutions for the city. At the end of Phase Two, which, you know, we're targeting for spring of next year, we'll be bringing finalized options for staff and council to consider. And if the city decides to move forward with a project, then we would be targeting construction, hopefully in summer of 2024, and then after that would be the measurement and verification phase. So in closing, just want to thank you all again for your time and the opportunity to give you this update this evening, and say again how great it has been to be working with all of your staff. In particular, I do want to recognize Marisa Campion. She's been fantastic in pulling everyone together and keeping things organized and moving smoothly. You have a really good team working for you at this city. It's clear everyone's really invested in building a successful energy program here, and we appreciate it, and we are very honored to be working with the city on this, and we're excited about the project that we're developing together. So with that, I want to say thank you and open it up to any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for recognizing our fabulous staff. We know they're fabulous too, by the way, so. But yeah, thank you for that. Madam Clerk, do we have any, oh, Councilman Tonison?
I don't have any.
Okay, Councilman Tonison?
That's a great presentation, Jason. Could you go over the timeline again with me?
Yeah, back it up here. So we're currently in that Step One on the far left, nearing the end of that, and hoping to be wrapping up Step Two around spring of next year. And at the end of Step Two of the investment grade audits, where we're bringing, you know, basically finalized project options for staff and council.
And how long would we shut the facility down, or would we?
We don't anticipate to be shutting anything down at this point, and, you know, with specific scopes, we'll be working closely with the city to really minimize disruptions as much as possible.
Perfect. Thank you.
Colleagues, any other questions for our presenters? Okay. Thank you very much. We receive your report.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, item 17, please.
Item 17, Resolution 2023-244 of the City Council of the city of Fairfield in authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Gates and Associates Landscape Architects to provide design services for the Heart of Fairfield Downtown Revitalization Project and authorizing an update to the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. And our presenter is Dwayne Dollman, Economic Development Division Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Dwayne Dollman, Economic Development Manager. I'm here tonight with David Vong as well, from the Public Works Department. So we're here to give an update on the Heart of Fairfield Downtown Streetscape Revitalization Project.
Dwayne, before you get started, I already have goosebumps. Go on.
No pressure.
Okay. So just as background, staff came before council last December. We had some conceptual options, conceptual design options for the Streetscape project. Basically, three options. The first was a baseline, the lowest cost. We then added the intersection upgrades. That was the second highest cost. And then we had the ultimate plan, which was the ultimate cost. At the time, the available budget was a little under $5 million. Staff came back to, I mean, council came back to staff and said that you would like us to come back to you with an option kind of 2.5 between the medium and the ultimate. And at that time, that cost was around $7.5 to $9 million. So just as a point of reference, the Streetscape project goes from Jefferson all the way to Pennsylvania. The 2.5 plan that we had looked at included design, included work in the amenity zone, which you see there in green, work on the corners, which is the yellow, also the pedestrian zone, which is in blue. And then the next phase of that was also going to be looking at doing potential street So since that time, the city has gone through a budget correction, and so that has prompted staff to relook at the project. Turns out that the funding has been reduced down to a little over $2 million as potential funding source. So between December now, staff has kind of pivoted the project and looked at how we can reduce the scope of the project to meet the budget that we have available. But with the overall goal of that, we still want to meet, you know, what the public was looking for and what the businesses are looking for in downtown. So just to go over the funding sources, we would have potentially a million and a half dollars would be coming from the Intergovernmental Loan Fund, Economic Development, half a million dollars would be coming from the Tree Mitigation Fund, and about $60,000 would be coming from the Urban Design Downtown Art Fund. So just want to spend a little time just talking about the basics of the project itself and the goals that we have, that we think we're going to be achieving with this. So overall, this project is really just in the amenity zone. So previously, the 2.5, the map that we showed, had work that was going to be in the corners, possibly in the street, in the pedestrian zone. This really focuses just on the amenity zone. So the amenity zone is just what it describes, all the things that are from the curb over to about the middle of the sidewalk. In this case, we would be basically removing all the old things that have been there for 30, 40 years in that amenity zone, the pergolas, the pots, the older trash cans, the street furniture there. We'd be removing that and replacing that essentially with pavers. We would also be removing and replacing all the trees on Texas Street in the downtown, and then we'd be adding public art. So the goals, I think, have not really changed from the beginning in that we think we're still achieving, and that is the first one, to upgrade and refresh the pedestrian experience. So that was one of the primary goals that we had with this project, as you were walking downtown, that we wanted to make that pedestrian experience between the curb and the building a more pleasant experience. Now, by removing the things in the amenity zone, the byproduct benefit of that is that also creates more space for us for outdoor dining. One of the things that we've been trying to talk our restaurants into is having more outdoor dining, but in many cases, they're hampered to do that because the pergolas and the pots are right in the way of where they would do that. And then by replacing the trees, you know, our goal is to create a more improved tree canopy that's beneficial not only to the pedestrians, but as well as to the businesses that are there and be able to see their businesses and see their signage. So just show a couple of pictures which will better illustrate what we're thinking of. So here's a picture of a typical amenity zone, and one of the issues that we're seeing from a tree perspective is that we have mature trees in downtown, but there's also some smaller trees. They're not all the same type. There's the difficulty of, not all the trees are healthy in the downtown. Some of them would have to be removed, and because they're having a hard time growing in the sidewalk in that type of environment, in many cases, those trees are as tall as they're going to get, but the canopy of those trees, many times, is in front of the business, in front of the business signs. This next slide shows a block where there's quite a bit in the amenity zone. So in essence, the work that we'd be completing would be to removing those, what you see, the pergolas, those pots, and those trees, to free up that space. And looking at the trees, we've looked at other communities. The large picture on the right is Downtown Pleasanton, and the tree that they've looked at, or the tree that they have, is one that grows fairly fast. The canopy of the tree is much more open. It provides the shade, but as well as allows you to see through to the business. So one of the things that we'd be working with Gates and Associates is to help us pick out, you know, the best tree, the trees that would fit our downtown on Texas Street, as well as some of the complementary type of trees that have more color. And then lastly, to further our, you know, the Food and Arts District that we have in downtown, then we would be installing the glass-off sculptures that we have, and those would be at each mid-block crossing from Pennsylvania all the way to Jefferson. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to David, who's going to talk about the scheduling a little bit more about the work itself.
Thank you, Dwayne. Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Council Members. Because there are a lot of downtown events during the spring and summer, the projects will be done in two phases in order not to impact city signature events such as the Fourth of July Parade, Timmerno and Vine, and the Redner State Parade. Painting City Council approval tonight. Phase One, which is lined out above the arrow timeline above, will be the demolition of the pergolas, potter plants, and concrete benches in the amenity zone. It is proposed to be completed in May of 2024, in advance of the Makers Market, also known as a Small Business Saturday. Phase Two, lined out under the arrow timeline, will be replanning up the trees, repaving pavers, installing glass-off sculptures, and new trash cans. If funding allows, new benches and bike racks will also be installed. However, this schedule may impact city sponsor events such as Vine and Table in October, but event organizers will be notified in advance so that proper accommodations can be developed. Staff recommends authorizing the city manager to execute their agreement for professional design services with Gates and Associates for the project in an amount not to exceed $219,843, and approving a budget transfer of $2,65,725 to fund the design and future construction costs. Thank you. That concludes our presentations, and Dwayne and I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you for your report. We received that. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers on this item?
I do not have any.
All right. And council colleagues, questions? Councilman Vicaro?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Yeah, great presentation. Thank you, Dwayne. Also, my question is, you know, I've talked about this before, probably multiple times up here. about the lack of showing how our diversity in downtown and the people and who we are in this city. And I really don't see that here. I know there's been maybe one, I think there's one or two murals downtown. Am I right? Yeah. I mean, I would just like to see our, the people who live here celebrated more somehow. Okay, I'm not sure in what phase that can be. But I have mentioned that over, you know, a number of years. So that's just something I would like to throw out there. I don't know if you guys want to answer that or.
I know that Jonathan from our office is the one that's, is the liaison regarding the murals in downtown. And so they've been talking to different property owners about, okay, where could the next murals be? So that's something that we can pass on to see if 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 that type of, you know, concept can be implemented in one of those murals or more murals or things like that.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, this is something I know I've been harping on, but, you know, I just wanted to make that clear. You know, my my personal opinion, I think it would be good for downtown to see that. But everything else here I like. And so, you know, Dwayne and David, you know, good presentation. So thank you.
And and I would just want to jump in real quick there, Councilman Vaccaro. Jonathan, that Dwayne mentioned, as he's been talking with the Art Committee that that tries to put together those murals, they have been talking about making sure that the next mural is very representative of the diversity for, of our city.
Any other comments? Councilman Tonason.
So I would just piggyback on what Rick said. If we can, are those murals something that we would get to review? Or have?
It's it's been the committee that's reviewing those, but we'd be happy to share, you know, any conceptual art with with you all.
Okay. I'm obviously very excited about this. But I just want to say, you guys are doing a fantastic job. I know that the council's been pushing hard for this, and you guys have been responding well. I am over the top excited about how how the downtown's doing, how the the new restaurants are coming downtown. We're doing these streetscapes, and it's really moving in the direction. Because I've had many meetings with shareholders that, you know, it's it's not a secret that I'm, I was born in, you know, on Empire Street. But I've talked to people that that have said, you know, you've been telling us this for forty years. You've been saying you're going to do this for forty years. And and me and David were at a meeting a couple of years ago. And we said, the the time's up. The forty years is over. We're going to do it. So I just want to say thank you, and you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. Councilwoman Panduro.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, I'm excited as well. But I really appreciate that the businesses are being listened to downtown. Like, I know they had some input on this, and we had our ideas. But to be able to come together and kind of meet in the middle for something that works for both the city and the businesses, I think is fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Carr, anything? All right. Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution. All right. Thank you, Councilman Tonason, is second by Councilmember Vaccaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, resolution passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Item eighteen, City Council Discussion and Direction Related to the Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Districts That Failed the June twenty twenty-three Proposition Two-Eighteen Vote. And our presenter will be our city manager, David Gassaway.
Yeah, I, my name is on the report, but ultimately, this was an effort from a group of our residents and the vice mayor. So Vice Mayor Bertani, I will turn this one over to you.
Okay, thank you. Back in July, after we got our L L M D results, back in July, some neighbors reached out to me, and I reached out to some neighbors, and we decided to keep working, to keep working, to make sure that, first, we did a kind of a postmortem of what went wrong with the L L M Ds that did not pass, and then to talk about looking forward. And so the group of individuals you're about to see, these are just volunteers from our community who have put in some serious work to bring this presentation. And be clear, we're the Neighborhood Support Team, the N S T. Sounds kind of governmental, doesn't it? But we have not been asked by the City Council to make a recommendation to the City Council. So the information that you're going to receive today is what we believe is a good suggestion path forward for moving forward to get our L L M Ds passed in the neighborhoods that were unsuccessful. We even have some residents from Paradise Valley on the N S T, the Neighborhood Support Team. Now, you know Paradise Valley passed their L L M Ds. So these folks don't even have to put in this work, but you know what? They're doing it anyway because they want to help us in Rolling Hills, in Rancho Solano, in the other districts that didn't pass. They want to help to show us a roadmap on how to be successful. So we've met, what, four times now, I believe, some some, four times, five? And we have been working on putting together and informa, some information for the City Council to, I guess, take under consideration in terms of our strategy for moving forward with the L L M Ds. We've identified kind of what went wrong, and we've identified what went right in places like Paradise Valley. And so we're going to have a presentation this evening, which is basically a culmination of the information and work that we've done over the last months and and hopefully introduce some ideas to the City Council that perhaps we can take under further, under further consideration. So before we do that, though, I just want to thank each and every one of you on the Neighborhood Support Team for your time, for your effort, for your vision, for caring, for caring enough to take the time to do this this amazing piece of work. I want to thank Theta Peck, Sheila Tucker, Joe Bisby, Steve Garretson, June Johnson, Rick Johnson, Carol Haddock. And I want to thank Kelly Ballard for helping us get off the ground. And I also want to thank Councilman Vaccaro for helping to convene this this group and for supporting, you know, like, let's, let's find a way, let's find a pathway forward. I can tell you in Rolling Hills and I think in other areas, I mean, we can already see the degradation of our neighborhood without the L L M Ds being in place. And it's been, what, a few months? So I want to invite our presenters up right now and and let us consider the presentation. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much, everyone, again, for your very hard work on this very important topic. We're back to L L M Ds. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor, council members, staff, residents. It's my honor to be working with a really good group of people that are volunteering their time because they want their city to be as beautiful as it can be. And the landscape and lighting districts that we have are a great opportunity for us to have a very beautiful city. The landscape that has been planted and worked over the years is in various condition levels. And the Paradise Valley Landscape District, as the vice mayor mentioned, we were able to pass our assessment, and the other seven districts did not pass it for various reasons. But that's why we formed as a group. We got together to say, what do we do now? Because of the loans that were issued, the amount of available funds to do the continuing work is significantly less. So we were already hurting, and now we're going to be hurting more. And we don't want that to continue. So what do we do? And that's where our committee has come into place. We have a very tight timeline. We're working on essentially a nine-month program. The previous program was eighteen months in length. My portion of what I'm speaking on tonight is, why did we pass? We are hoping to be able to use these concepts going forward with the other districts to basically encourage people to know more about what is going to take place. For us, our main, having a good, clear communication is the number one item. As you're here this evening, you're listening to the City Council, you're listening to presenters, and you're getting very clear, concise information. When the landscape information went out, it cannot be leaning in any direction, either for or against having a new new assessment. And the city very much has to walk that line. As the individual residents, we were able to give it a better description of what will happen if you vote yes or if you vote no. And we were able to identify specifically, if somebody votes no, what will we get? If somebody votes yes, what will they get? The list on the left side, the column, are the functions that are accomplished in the district. The center column is the frequency that those will be accomplished. And that has been the traditional frequency of the work, mowing the lawn, trimming the the bushes, taking care of the trees, et cetera, all the way through the fertilization schedule. The far right one is if the no vote takes place. And we were able to present this to the residents. And Steve Garretson, our president of the Paradise Valley HOA, I immensely thank him. He took on the task, and he had the same responsibilities as the city, that he could not tell people what to do. But he did want to provide good, solid information. And this listing here was one of the primary things that was used. In addition to this, it was fielding questions, people one-on-one talking. People would have questions. Steve would give the answers. We would talk amongst various groups that would come up, various gatherings that would take place. So we're sharing honest information along the lines of the listening tour that took place. People want to know what's going on, and they need to be given good, clear information. So for us, in our success to get it passed, and we did just barely pass, it was very tight. We still had people that just don't want to pay any more taxes. I fully understand that thought. But this is something that we will each benefit from. As we drive through Paradise Valley, we see the trucks that are out there, the landscaping that is being reworked, that has needed work for a while, that wasn't able to be done because our money was just not going far enough. So those concepts got the majority of our people to vote yes. So going forward, we want to work with the other districts. And as Vice Mayor Bertani has said, this is a boots-on-the-ground situation. This has got to be where people see people's actual passion, but also the facts, that they will have a more beautiful community if they do spend a little bit more money. Understanding how that process works is a little difficult, but it can be made more simple. And that's what our people saw as we presented to them. So we wanted to give them that clear understanding and to answer their questions. I was not in favor of all the practices of the the outside contractor. They had limitations, such as if we don't pass, you will have reduced services. Well, the list that you saw, there's almost no services. But they could not describe that in great detail. So as we got into the campaign, the city also was able to provide additional information that made it a little bit more clear for people, but the campaign had already been going on. So we are here as the support group to be able to empower people to understand and to better clearly understand what's going to take place. They will see it, and Joe will be up here in a moment to talk about the Rolling Hills group. But we have seven districts that we want to work with, that we would need to work with to help make the city as beautiful as it can be, and that is our goal. So again, our district, we were fortunate, but we are here to basically be arm-in-arm with you because each of these districts deserves a good landscaping that'll keep their home values up and that will also make it an enjoyable place to live. With that.
Thank you. Joe?
Thanks, Rick. Madam Vice Mayor, many of the City Council members, staff, audience, microphone. We had a good discussion for Rick on what what worked. This was going to be a beautiful drive up or walk up Hillborne Avenue in Rolling Hills. The link didn't work. So imagine, if you would, that we actually had a video. But this is what we have. This is Rolling Hills as of this month. Weeds are a little bit out of control. They didn't just become out of control because of the vote. This has been going on for an awfully long time. The reduced services that we had to go through the first time before the loan began this process downward. No hobbies were used in this photograph, and it wasn't Photoshop. That's the actual weed height. And there are a lot of them all over the place. All you have to do is just drive through or walk through, and you'll see it almost everywhere you go. Sidewalks are becoming impassable, are going to be tripping hazards, and they're just bloody ugly. The weeds have gotten so far out of control because no weed abatement was done last spring when they should have been done because of reduced services. Again, to just drive home the point, everywhere we look, we have weeds. Weeds are plants that grow where you don't want them to grow. And those kind of weeds really like to grow wherever they wish. And with the winds in Fairfield, it just spreads them farther and farther. The law, the more we get them out of control, the worse they're going to get. More views of the same thing. Oops, wrong button. So where do we go from here? As Vice Mayor Bertani just said, we have to get more people involved and look at what we can do to improve our our landscape, our 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 whole entire neighborhood, and again, the city. The city benefits as well as the neighborhoods do. But in order to do this, we're going to need more people. We're going to need to get more volunteers to knock door, go door-to-door. We may need to get phone banks, assuming that people still answer phones. The biggest thing we're going to need is support from the city. When we need information, we have to get information. You don't have to take sides to give information. Data is data. So if we ask for numbers, you should be able to give us numbers. If they're not available, then make them not available. When we voted, we only had forty percent of our residents turn in votes. I don't have all of the percentage, but suffice to say, in Rolling Hills, we failed. If it was just a yes-no, just for information, the yeses would have won. But because of the waiting, which was not well-understood during the during the campaign, and the communications from the contractor weren't clear, that was a very big stumbling block. And the handout that I presented there, this is our attempt to get the information out to all of the residents. We even sat at an Easter egg hunt that we hold every year and had a table for handouts. I think we handed out six or seven. So not a really good turnout. So we have to get a little more interest and support into into the group. We have to pass new Two-Eighteen vote. That's a must. Our neighborhoods are going to go downhill very, very quickly. They've started now. They're just going to get nothing but worse. As I've said before, we need information. When we ask for information, we need Public Works to provide us data that we can use. How we use it, it's up to us. You don't have to take sides to give us data. So it's very important that whatever we ask for, if it's in your purview to give it to us, let us run with it. us, let us run with it. You don't have to make any decisions about it. We'll do that ourselves. And then you're safe and off the hook. So you don't have to worry about taking a position or a side. Are there any questions?
So thank you. One of the things we also did is we looked at the propriety of forming CFDs as opposed to an LLMD structure for getting this done. And the city manager provided us with information that, you know, the CFD would, and that is a community, CFD stands for?
Communities, Facilities.
Facilities District. Okay. So yeah, so the CFD structure would require a two-thirds vote of all registered voters, which means that's a lot more required votes than is required by an LLMD, which requires fifty-one percent of ballots received. So the universe for a CFD is all registered voters, two-thirds of that would be required, as opposed to an LLMD, which requires fifty-one percent, but not of all registered voters of all ballots received. So that's why we're, you know, suggesting sticking with the LLMD kind of structure for getting this done as opposed to a CFD. And at the end of the day, what this is going to require, in addition to what our presenters just said, is the bottom line is, we need people to vote. We need people to vote with the necessary information that, so that they're informed voters. So I don't know if anybody out there remembers Measure P. I certainly know the sales tax increase. I know Rick Vaccaro does, because we walked precincts, we held the campaign to get it done. So we walked precincts, we had phone banks, we had people out knocking doors, answering questions, because we're asking people for an increase in sales tax, which was vitally needed for the city at that time, to maintain services and not have layoffs and all that stuff. So we know how to get it done, but it's going to take that kind of a grassroots effort in order to get these LLMDs straightened out. And what we also talked about doing is, once the LLMD Oversight Committee is seated, that we will work with the LLMD Oversight Committee to identify, to identify folks in the community who are identified by each of the district representatives for each of the LLMD districts that we've appointed. They can point us to certain people in their district that are basically force multipliers. I mean, we not all know who those people are in our community, right? The guy, the men and women who, that's the go-to person. If something is happening at the city, you go to him, you go to her. Those are the people we need to identify through the LLMD Oversight Committee so that we can begin to build a grassroots effort to get this job done. So at this point, that's our presentation. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. By the way, this is not a staff report. The ladies and gentlemen on our NST team got this done. So once again, superb job, appreciated very much. So colleagues, any questions? Yes, Mr. Tonison?
I have a, probably not a question you're going to like, but this seemed more like a workshop item. What is, I don't, what was the, what was the purpose? I mean, I appreciate all the work that they did, but isn't this something that we would do, like, at a workshop?
This is just a response to the LLMD votes that failed. And some residents reached out to me and to Rick, and I reached out to some residents. And so it's just, it's just, this is not a recommendation to City Council because City Council hasn't requested one. This is some work that has been put in to begin to look at a strategy for moving forward with our LLMDs that failed.
But it seems like an LLMD campaign to me, you know, that's something that you guys could have done, and then, once you had some information, you could have brought it back to the council if there was a decision we got to make. But I'm just confused on why it came before us, so.
Okay, so the reason it came before you is because this group's been, this is just a neighbor, this is just residents who want to help. And that's really what it is. It's our, it's our bosses who, you know, we work for, who said, hey, let's figure something out.
Then maybe a town hall. I just don't think this was the place, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Well, I'm not exactly, I don't know why that is, but this is just, this is not a recommendation. This is just information to inform maybe what we do moving forward so that, you know, we've got smart people who understand this stuff, and we've got Paradise Valley who got theirs passed. And so they wanted to help the other districts in terms of, like, this is what, this is what we did in Paradise Valley, this is what went right, how can we help you guys be successful? So that we're all successful together.
So I respect you, but I'll agree to disagree. This was a town hall meeting, a workshop. This should have been, in my opinion, presented in another way.
Okay. I'm, all right, I'll let that be that. But what it is, is just information in how we can, how we can move forward together and maybe start looking at things that we can do differently based on the success they had in Paradise Valley. So, and a town hall meeting, I mean, I guess part of the reason, Scott, is that we wanted to actually do some work. A town hall meeting is for discourse and ideas and stuff like that, and I understand that. And that's, and this is, this does not preclude any town hall meeting at all. In fact, we should probably have some. But now we've got real data and information. That's all, that's all we're saying.
Which we could have done in a workshop. This just seemed like an LLMD campaign. And I don't know why it came before council, and I've said that twice now, I'll just leave it alone now, but I don't think this was the place.
Okay. Well, we definitely respectfully disagree. So with that said, do we have any other council members, any comments, concerns, ideas?
I just wanted to make a comment real quick. This is separate from the discussions, but I want to thank Rick Johnson because he did reach out to somebody who I gave the name to. He called right away. So he's working with another group right now. So I just wanted to thank Rick for doing that. Because it was, it was needed. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions for our presenters? So, Mr. City Manager, so I have a question now. So we have this information. What, what, is the city thinking of a strategy in terms of, you know, how we should move forward in terms of relooking at or reconsidering the LLMDs that failed?
To date, there's been no conversations of the city council of any desires to relook at that. Obviously, you have this on the agenda tonight. That can be a discussion for the city council, if that's a direction you want to go in.
So why don't we, once we have the full city council seated, I guess we can, or can we agendize it for a full city council meeting?
We can, of course, agendize a conversation at a future city council meeting when you have the full body here.
Agendize what? We just had the conversation.
Well, we need to agendize how the city is going to move, if and how.
The next move would be their next vote on the 218s. Isn't that like a year apart? Isn't it, isn't a 218 done every year, or can it be done every six months? Or, I don't know what the?
Which is why we need to agendize it and have a staff report to provide that level of information.
Which would be done at meetings like we did at Rancho, like we did at Paradise, like we did at all these other places.
But the full, the full city council needs to have a conversation about what we want to do moving forward. That hasn't been, that conversation hasn't been had yet.
But we, but we just went through these LLMDs.
Correct. And we just failed. Yeah, we just failed.
Right. So then we take another try at a 218, you get together, you have town hall meetings, and we, you know?
But if you, but if you continue to do the same thing and expect a different result, I don't think that's going to work out very well. So this was an, this was an opportunity to look at maybe some things that we do differently moving forward. But, and this is just informational, but the full city council needs to have this conversation on whether we're going to move forward, if so, how. This is just information from our residents who know what they're talking about with this in terms of how we might do things a little differently to effectuate a different result.
So I'm going to, I'm going to stop now, but I love Rick like a brother, but this was not the right place. That's my opinion. So to keep rehashing it is, you know, bringing it before a full council, okay, let's talk about agendizing something, but I don't even know what we're agendizing. This was a 218 vote that lost. So another 218 vote comes along whenever, I don't know what the timeframe is, but I think it's every year.
One year annually.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's not a 218 vote each year. It's, we, there was engineering reports that used the methodology that then went out for a 218 vote. There are a few options before the city council, and I think that that's what the vice mayor is requesting, is that that be agendized for the city council so that staff could present to you what your options might be for a future 218 vote.
Okay, question. Okay, so would that, would that change the way it's weighted?
We could look at different methodologies on the waiting, but what that would require is reengineering of the districts. And so at this point in time, you have engineers' reports that have a waiting, and I know that there was, you know, issues and questions surrounding that waiting and how that was done. We've not talked to other engineering firms or other firms that specialize in doing this. Of course, there's, there's cost to that, which I think I identified in the staff report that sort of lines that out. Certainly, that's work that would need to be done ahead of any reengineered district that would have a 218 vote.
Okay.
Would that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Would that require close to the same cost? I believe that last engineering report was $750,000.
Yeah, the costs were in the $75,000 to $80,000 range per district. The engineering portion of that was around $50,000 per district, and then $25,000 per district for the outreach, the website, some of the engagement components. So if, if, you know, based on the presentation that we just heard from the neighborhood support team here, if you wanted to just look at the engineering component to that, as, you know, in some reengineered or different look on the methodology, then that's something that, again, we just sort of estimated in terms of the, in the staff report, around the $50,000 is probably a fair assumption for us then to go out and engage with an alternative engineering firm.
And then if, and this, this is what we, this is why we need to have a staff briefing on this, so that we can have all of the information that we, that we need. But, so if we were to remain, if we were to rely on the existing engineering reports, would that be acceptable? Or if we do another round, we must get new engineering reports?
If you want to change the methodology, I believe you would need to get new engineering reports, because those engineering reports utilize the methodology that was previously created.
Right.
Now, in terms of revoting based on those engineers' reports, that's a specific question. I believe you can, but I would have to confirm that.
Okay. All right, good enough.
Last question. Yeah, and my only concern with that is time. You know, how much time would it take to change it? You know, I think that once it, once it does come back to the full council, it's, okay, here's our options, and we want to do this, or we want to do something else. I think at that point, and to, just to comment on what Councilman Tonison said, then a campaign starts. And then it goes, you know, when it comes to the council and says, okay, okay, we're going to, we're going to stick with what we had, or we're going to change the methodology. And at that point, then it does go to the citizens, because we've all, I know Scott worked on it, Pam worked on it, I worked on it, you know, Measure P. And this is something that was really needed, but it took a lot of time, it took a lot of work. And I don't think it's going to take, I mean, I really feel that a lot of people, this was a wake-up call for a lot of people in these districts.
I agree.
And a lot of people were like, oh my God, how did it fail? Well, it failed because not enough people voted and not enough people understood, which that's why I just thank Rick for, you know, educating someone else that I know. But I really do believe that, you know, it was a wake-up call. I really feel that even if we kept this methodology, it would pass, if we had that kind of campaign. I'm not sure how much time we have to do. Maybe you can, you know, comment on that, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah. If you were trying to get something that was placed on the assessment rolls in 2024, the deadline, I'm shooting off the top of my head, but I want to say it's somewhere around August 10th, that the documentation is required to be submitted to the assessor's office at the latest. Typically, we do that in July. Between now and July, to do, you know, just kind of laying out a general process, you know, go through some selection process in order to, if you were wanting to reengineer. Select an engineering firm, you know, put out the RFP, select an engineering firm, get them under contract, then them go in, do the analysis. The big unknown, off the top of my head, without talking to some other firms, would be, you know, how much of the prior work is usable versus is, you know, how much of that just has to be redone. And so, you know, realistically, I think you would be pushing it very, very tight, if at all possible, in order to get it done in time to then put out the ballots. And I believe, I'm looking at Chris Lewis, I believe it's a 45-day balloting process that that has to be open. And then, you know, after the balloting process, then the city council has to take the resolutions. So, you know, very quickly, you start just adding up, you know, those, those weeks of time. I think we would be hard-pressed to reengineer the districts and have it go on the 24 assessment rolls.
Mr. City Attorney?
Madam Vice Mayor, just two procedural matters. I heard you ask if people had questions for the presenters, but I don't think you asked for public comment on this item.
Oh. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
I see a gentleman.
Oh.
And you can come on up, sir, and fill out a?
Oh, you have a card?
Hey, thank you for that, Mr. City Attorney.
Oh, okay.
And then, Madam Vice Mayor, one other procedural matter. I know, I heard you state the preference that you'd prefer to do this with a full council, but all, as I know you know, you do have a quorum tonight. The council can take action with just the five of you, you don't need seven. So if you decided to give direction to staff, council could do that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Carol Haddock-Hommel, and I agree with both the city manager and the city attorney. This is something that can't be postponed. You have to have agendized whatever to make a decision and get this moving. Time is not on our side. And I live in Rolling Hills, which is the, probably have the least amount of money. What are we spending? $67,000 of the $333,000 that is assessed. $67,000 is spent on landscaping. That means tree trimming, which doesn't happen unless it covers a stop sign, no weeds, no landscape strips, they just mow. And you have limited, they've reduced the water, so there's, you know, because utilities cost. And had this passed, we would have had $916,000 in assessments. And think about it, had no increase in assessments since 1988. And so, well, some of the people might have not have been born in this room by 1988. So, I mean, what was it, a dollar for a McDonald's hamburger? Now it's seven. So for us to keep paying the same amount for, since 1988, is crazy. And if, I went and figured it out and looked at the Consumer Price Index increase, it would be only like $100 more than that, had we had a Consumer Price Index increase each year. So I can't stress enough how quickly the city council needs to give direction to staff to move on this, so that we have a direction. Because in, you know, Rolling Hills, I will tell you that not only does Rick Johnson, but other property assessors have told us that they're going to click the box when they assess houses. And when they see the weeds that you just saw some of the pictures of, they're going to, it's going to go down 6%. So if your house, I'll do a number, is worth a million bucks, you lose $60,000 if you're going to sell it. And we really need to move. And we really need to get the outreach out. And Rick Johnson, I mean, I did it for my district, he did it for all, my goodness. And what are we talking, 30% to 50% of the homeowners voted in last year's election? We did not have enough time. So the word has to get out. And you'll see what we handed out in Rolling Hills and what they handed out in Paradise Valley. And yeah, we got the majority of votes, but, you know, we had 40% in Rolling Hills. And our $67,000, well, next year, the prices are going to go up, we're going to have $40,000. to have $40,000. And you can't imagine what it's going to look like, driving up to the school or Hillborne Road. And I think I'm pretty sure I'm right here, because no one has contradicted me in many, many meetings. So please, do something tonight, or put it on an agenda, or say we have to have something to make a decision. Thank you.
Yeah, any other public speakers on this? So did you turn in a card?
Yes, he did.
Okay, great, thank you.
Khalid.
Good afternoon. My name is Khalid. I'm one of the residents in Rolling Hills. I'm a simple citizen, you know, that I love my community. I'm asking Mr. Scott, you know, very genuine questions. Please explain to me, if it's okay, what is the job of city council member if not to care about the community? What is the problem of having this issue? This is a real issue. I walk in the neighborhood every day. I can see that the weeds are getting taller and taller, and there's one of the best schools, actually, Rolling Hills Elementary School is surrounding that neighborhood. And we have a parks. And I talked to many, many residents. A lot of them, they had questions. Personally, I had a lot of questions for the city, and those questions were not answered. One of them is, why Hillborne Road? We have to pay for it. Hillborne Road now becomes a backup for Highway 80. I do transportation for Levy. Please provide me the recent data. I have a picture of Bemper to Bemper in Hillborne Road, because as a backup of Hillborne is, especially now with the construction going on. Why residents, you want to understand how much I pay as a percentage? Is it 45% and city pay 55%? Those questions were a lot of doubt about it. So that's why I spoke personally to many residents. They voted no, and they have a reason to vote no. I voted yes. And the people who I know voted no, because they said they didn't have enough data. Some of them, for example, Meadow Glen Park, the resident who lives in that area, they barely can see maintenance going on there. And I take my kids there. They're right. We don't see them. There's no service. They're paying for something, and they don't receive it. That's why people voted no. And that's why we needed to explain to the people, do some campaign, help those people, get the word out. And this should be an item in the agenda, because my understanding, you're here because you care about the city of Fairfield. You want it to be another ghetto there? It's easy. Two years, three years, house values will at least shrink by 20% or 30% in the next five years. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Much appreciated. Are there any other public speakers on this matter? Okay, thank you, everyone. Yeah, so Mr. City Manager, I'd like to have this agendized. So, well, I'd like to have the LLMD matter agendized for the districts that failed in this year, so that we can, you know, have a staff report on what moving forward looks like. So the full city council can have a conversation on our strategy for moving forward, if that's what we want to do. Do I need to make a motion to that effect?
Well, I'd be looking for a second council member to join you in that direction.
Okay. Do I have a second?
All right.
I'll, with this caveat, okay? So if we're going to have, if we're going to have an agenda, because, actually, I had a question for the city attorney, because you said take action. Really not taking action, we're taking a direction, okay? So, okay, and I agree, if we have, if we have it on the agenda, it comes back with our facts, right? So as a council, we say, okay, let's go in this direction. At that point, I think then it becomes, you know, it becomes a campaign with the citizens and with the city's help, of course, but really, it's going to take the citizens to do this. So I think once that happens, you know, and it probably should happen quickly, and then we move it, you know, move it to the entire city, because that's what we're going to need. We're really going to need everybody out there. Not just us, and not just us to make these decisions. Hopefully, this decision we make will be the right one, you know, and I think it will once we get the information. But how long do you think that would take? I know I shouldn't ask you that, because you were going to say, don't ask me that. How long do you think it would take before we can get it on the agenda?
We can bring it at your second meeting in October.
Okay.
And I just want to make sure, did you actually, do you have a question for me?
That, no, you said take action. I thought it meant direction.
I felt like you answered your question. You said you had a question for me, and I'm like, I think you answered it. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, that was it.
Yeah, I've said take action, but I meant direction.
Right, okay. Sorry. Just wordsmithing, that's all.
Okay. So, yeah, and just, I think we can move on. I just want to, as a point of clarification, be very clear that what our residents did today was put together informations and suggestions, but by no means was this any kind of a campaign, because that would have been a pretty pitiful campaign, if that were called that. So it was just information by residents who care. So with that, we'll talk about this on, in October. All right? Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for your hard work. We appreciate you. And we need your help. All right, moving on to item 19.
Item 19, public hearing and Resolution 2023-245 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, adopting an amendment to the train station specific plan, SP 2023-001. And our presenter is Dave Feinstein, interim community development director.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Bertoni, members of the council. I'm Dave Feinstein, the interim community development director. The next item on your agenda is a proposed amendment to the train station specific plan regarding the timing for construction of a new road out in the specific plan area, a road that is referred to as New Cannon Road in the specific plan. I think you're all familiar with the specific plan. It's a plan for development of a large area out in the northeast part of the city, centered around the train station that we constructed a couple of years ago. I think you're all familiar with the major project being built out there right now, the One Lake subdivision, being built by the McKinley Group. And the item before you tonight is a request to amend the specific plan to eliminate a trigger policy in the plan for when a section of what's called New Cannon Road would be required to be built. So I'm going to give you a little bit of background on some of this request. It's actually being requested by the developer of the One Lake subdivision, so I'm going to give you some background on that, walk you through that request, and then give you some factors to consider as you weigh this request. So this is an overview of the specific plan itself. The plan calls for over 6,000 new housing units, over 4 million square feet of industrial development. And development would occur in a collection of what we call planning areas. These colored areas through here, these five planning areas are primarily residential, including these two right here, which constitute the One Lake project. Most of what you see being worked on right now is in this blue area. So the lake sits right here, and what's called Planning Area 4 is all the housing around the lake. The One Lake subdivision, it's actually a two-phase project, and so the second phase would be what's called Planning Area 5, up to the north up here. And then the 4 million square feet of industrial is here to the east. Now, there's a whole series of roadway improvements that are planned as a part of the train station specific plan. You can't build all that amount of development and not put in the infrastructure to go along with it. But a couple of, or some key infrastructure pertains to what we call New Cannon Road. And New Cannon Road essentially would replace an existing road connection here on the east side of Vanden Road. So here's Vanden Road, here's the train station. Right now, if you want to head over to the north gate of Travis Air Force Base, you cross the tracks right here. If there's a train coming, you got to wait for the, wait for the train. And you cross along New Cannon Road, and then you come south on North Gate Road to access the north gate of the base. What the train station specific plan calls for is a two-phased replacement for Cannon Road and North Gate Road. And, whoops, the first phase is this section right here, which instead of coming like this, it would be a more direct route from Vanden Road down to the north gate. And the second phase is this stretch right here, which would connect Vanden Road to Peabody Road. So right now, there is no road that connects through here, so this wouldn't be replacing anything. It would actually be a new road connection. The focus of the policy we're going to talk about, the request to amend, is this stretch right here. And you'll see that it fronts, most of it runs along, that second phase of the One Lake subdivision runs along Planning Area 5, provides access to both, there's two parts of it, including this little area we call the Duckhead. Keep that in mind. We'll come back a little bit in just a couple of minutes, and we'll see a little closer view of this as a part of the analysis here. So the train station specific plan includes a policy for construction of that more western stretch that was highlighted in yellow just a moment ago. And the policy says that New Cannon Road shall be constructed from Peabody Road to Vanden Road by the landowner of Planning Area 5 prior to the issuance of any residential permits within Planning Area 5. So going back to that exhibit I just showed, what it says is, this whole stretch of road needs to be constructed before any work occurs in Planning Area 5. Now, the reason the specific plan includes this road, yes, it does provide access to Planning Area 5, but it's really intended as a reliever for the traffic that would otherwise collect down here at Vanden and Peabody and Cement Hill Road, right here at the train station. Right now, if you want to get over there to the east, most traffic coming in this direction has to come through this intersection. And as you build that whole specific plan out, this intersection gets progressively more congested. And eventually, you need a road. So the specific plan puts this road in as one of the roads that needs to be built, and it includes this policy that says it has to be built before anything gets constructed in the second phase of the One Lake subdivision. The developer has put in a request to delete that policy. So you've got that policy, and they propose to remove that. And so that's essentially the question before you tonight. So let me give you some factors to weigh as you consider this request. So there's a series of reasons why this could be supported. And the first one, the train station specific plan includes some language that makes clear that even though we've got a policy that says, yep, it's got to be done before anything in Planning Area 5 is built, it's pretty explicit that we don't, we didn't really know when the plan was put together 12 years ago, when any particular section of road would need to be built. The section of the plan says the timing and sequence of construction of roadway improvements cannot be determined at this time. Really depends on a lot of factors. It depends on how much development occurs elsewhere, how much development might be occurring outside the city coming in, and we didn't really know. So what that means is, yes, we put that policy in that said that road had to be constructed before Planning Area 5 started, but it was really more of a want and not a mandate. It's not, it definitely wasn't known at that time when that intersection at Vanden was going to require it to go in. So we acknowledged upfront, we don't really know. Second is that there's fewer units that are being built, particularly in the One Lake subdivision, than were originally anticipated by the specific plan. The plan anticipated more than 3,000 housing units to be built in those two phases, in those two planning areas. In reality, based on the plans that have been approved, there's only going to be a little over 2,000. So that's a third less traffic is going to be generated by that project. And finally, it comes down to a question of, you know, what's the capacity of both the developer to fund projects, and what's our allowance to actually require them to build new roadway improvements? When the specific plan was approved, the city entered into a development agreement with the developer for the One Lake project. And as a part of that, it identified what their fair share for future roadway and other transportation improvements like linear parks, what their fair share would be, and what the maximum the city could require them to build. And it turns out, it's a total of about $63 million in today's value for all of those improvements. So we're obligated, we're allowed, under the development agreement, to assign them about $63 million worth of work. Altogether, there's a long list of potential projects that we could require them to build. All the frontage of Vanden Road along their project, continuing Vanden Road out to the future Matt Garcia Community Park, which the developer, the One Lake project, they are required to build a portion of that, so you have to build that road. They, there's a component of the development agreement that says they actually need to build that, the other stretch of road as well. It includes an overcrossing of the railroad tracks and connects all the way down to Travis Air Force Base. Altogether, that and some other roadway improvements, that total list is over $100 million. So we've got a package of things that we could assign them, and it comes down to a question of, do we want to assign this particular road as a part of that when we're calculating how much we can, we can assign them? That stretch of road right there that's subject to this policy, it's about $16 million. So those are some factors to consider. Now, what really, the most important factor to consider, though, is whether or not their project triggers the need for that road. Down there at Vanden Road and some of the other intersections, do they get too congested? And so our city, our city's general plan has standards for the operation of intersections to tell us how much traffic can they handle before they're, in the eyes of the city, there's too much congestion, and you need to relieve that. So what, in response to the request from the developer, we engaged a traffic consultant, Farron Pierce. They were the original traffic consultant for the specific plan that put together the collection of roads that needed to be built. And we asked Farron Pierce to relook at this question and say, okay, now that we know where we are today, 12 years later, is Planning Area 5 the trigger for that new road? And so Farron Pierce put together that study. A copy was included with your packet. And the ultimate conclusion there, highlighted in the, sort of the purple color here, is that you can build out all of Planning Area 5 and all Planning Area 4, and in the end, what you'll find is that all of the intersections will still meet the city's operational standards, including the Vanden, Cement Hill, Peabody Road intersection. So the conclusion was that this project isn't what's going to push us over the edge and require that road. It doesn't mean that that road won't be required at some point during the build-out. Most likely, it would be the industrial development on the east side that's really kicking in a lot of both the truck traffic, employee traffic. But we know that it's not Planning Area 5 itself. So with that, it doesn't also mean that the developer of the One Lake project wouldn't have some responsibility for that road. So again, here's Planning Area 5, and this is that Duckhead that I was pointing out earlier. So that stretch of road runs through here, extends over to the west, over to Peabody Road, as the plan would identify. The approvals for Planning Area 5, still, regardless of what the city council does tonight, they are still required to build the frontage portion of that along here to serve their project. And so they are going to still build some of it. And as well, last month, the planning commission approved the master plan for the industrial, and that includes a policy, or not a policy, a requirement of the industrial, that is, they build new buildings, as they come in, they're required to do further study to determine if and when they are the ones who might be the trigger for that road. And if the studies do show that in the future, the industrial project would be required to build that road. So with that, staff does feel there's plenty of support for the request of the applicant. Before I move on to the, to the recommendation, just touch quickly, law requires that we take a look at the environmental impacts of changes like this. An environmental impact report was prepared back in 2011 when we adopted the specific, when we adopted the specific plan. It laid out the whole package of roadway improvements and mitigation measures and timing, if known. Policy 416, which is the subject of tonight's action, was not included as a mitigation measure in the EIR. So what that means is, the council can remove that without concern that you're eliminating a required mitigation for traffic impacts. We did further analysis and concluded that removing it doesn't create any new significant impacts. And so with that, you can rely on the existing EIR to cover the California Environmental Quality Act's requirements for environmental assessment. So with that, staff does feel that there's support for the request, and we are recommending that you adopt Resolution 2023-245, which would amend the train station specific plan to delete that policy. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you for the report.
Um, I am.
Well received. I am going to, if you don't mind, open the public hearing first, unless you want to do your questions before the public hearing is over. do your questions before the public hearing is open?
I have a question that I don't care when I-
Okay, go right ahead.
I saw on through here, also, I didn't see anything about emergency response or safety. With, with this planning area fulfilled, and it doesn't have impact on the road, I didn't see anything about any kind of emergency. There's, there's train tracks here, we all seen what happened in, I believe it was Pennsylvania. I'm just wondering if there was emergency, is there access? Has that been looked at for emergency response without having that road and that area being developed?
Yeah, so the, you know, emergency response is actually not gonna come from this direction over here. We have plans to build a new fire station generally right here, and so, you know, any, any emergency response direction would come primarily this way over here. Notably, the, the One Lake developer does have requirements that are separate and a little more, tied a little more tightly through the development agreement to build the overcrossing during the lifetime of the Planning Area 5. So they would be building this overcrossing as well as a connecting road over here through the, through the industrial. So that, you know, that's a, that's a high priority, I think, you know, for safety, both for, for crossing the railroad tracks, accessing the industrial, exiting from the air force base. So, you know, in terms of this particular road, it itself and this connection right here aren't creating a whole lot of emergency capacity.
Okay, thank you.
Colleagues, any other questions?
I, I had a couple of comments, but if the applicant wanted to speak, my comments aren't, I'll just say my comments. Thank you, because now all I see is a duck. But I, I watched the planning commission meeting, you guys did a great job at that meeting, and you covered all the bases, and I thought that, you know, you had some excellent points on there, and I'm certainly in favor of approving this.
Okay, any other questions before I open for public comment? So let me open the public hearing, and do we have any speakers on this item?
Yes, Steve Ryder.
Okay. Good evening.
Hello, hi. Last time, my name is Steve Ryder, and I'm one of the partners of One Lake or McKinley Partners. We're really proud of the project. Last time I was here was before the MPUD was approved in 2021. Since that time, and now I'm now a citizen, I live in One Lake, I'm very happy to be there. When that, MPUD was approved, this condition was something that we raised to staff already because we knew that it wasn't implementable, if you will, in the timeline. At that time, it was just decided to leave the condition, and rather than address that specific plan amendment, the traffic studies and all the things that needed to be done to address, the EIR and so on, had to be done so that we knew we were gonna be approaching you on this matter in a later time. We've moved ahead with Planning Area 5, we've done all the grading for it, we're ready to sell our first two neighbors, neighborhoods, which is 131 units with a builder. We are, and certainly that is conditioned, that sale would be conditioned on getting this policy removed so that they can issue building permits against that. Our project, as David said, doesn't trigger any, any traffic concerns, it doesn't trigger any EIRs. None, notwithstanding, we still are gonna be building a lot of other roadways, other roadways, rather than that segment that connects to Peabody. And so we're just asking that, we appreciate your consideration and respectfully ask you to approve the staff report and the resolution as they've recommended. And I'm here for questions if you want.
Thank you. Any other public speakers on this matter?
No, thank you.
Okay. Anyone wanting to speak on this matter? All right, let me close the public hearing, bring it back for further council consideration. Any other comments from the city council, questions, concerns?
Make a motion.
Okay, yeah, so I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 20?
Item 20, public hearing and resolution 2023-246 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, annexing territory Brighton Place to Community Facilities District Number 2012-2, Public Safety Services, Open Space Operation and Park Maintenance as Annexation Number 64, authorizing the levy of a special tax within the annexed territory and submitting the levy of a special tax to the qualified electors thereof. And resolution 2023-247 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield declaring the results of a special annexation election and territory annex to Community Facility, Facilities District Number 2012-2, Public Safety Services, Open Space Operation and Park Maintenance, determining the validity of prior proceedings and directing recording of amended notice of special tax lien for City of Fairfield Community Facilities District Number 2012-2, Public Safety Services, Open Space Operation and Park Maintenance, Annexation Number 64, Brighton Place. And our presenter is Chris Lewis, Senior Management Analyst from Public Works.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the council. Before you tonight is Annexation Number 64 for CFD 2012-2. This district's fund, this district funds citywide public safety services, park maintenance, and open space operations. The territory proposed for annexation is known as Brighton Place, and once constructed, the development will be six single-family units. The city council initiated the annexation of this territory on August 15th with the adoption of resolution 2023-213, and by conducting the public hearing tonight, carrying out the ballot procedure, and adopting the proposed resolution before you, council will complete the annexation process, and the territory will be added to the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, colleagues? Okay, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any public speakers?
No, no requests.
Would anybody like to speak at this time, closing the public hearing, bringing it back for a motion? So moved.
Adam, Vice Mayor, this is a two-step process. So you need to first move approval of resolution 2023-246. If that passes, then we have the clerk check the ballots, declare the election results, and then assuming it's favorable, you would move for resolution 2023-247.
Thank you for the point of clarification.
I'll make a, I'll make a resolution to adopt 22, 2023-246.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Oh, second it. Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No, motion carries unanimously. So I'll now entertain a motion to-
Okay, I'll open the ballot now.
Yeah, for, yeah, we'll have the city clerk open the ballot first.
All right.
And it's one yes vote in favor of annexation.
Okay, thank you. So I will now entertain a motion to approve resolution 2023-247.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Our last item for the evening is item 21.
Public hearing and resolution 2023-248 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, approving the submission of the fiscal year 2022-2023 Community Development Block Grant Program Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, CAPER, to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorizing the city manager to execute any agreements or documents requested by HUD. And our presenter is Latonya Torones, Housing Senior Project Manager.
Good evening, council and vice mayor. So really quickly, I'm asking for your approval for us to submit the, the CAPER, which is a mandatory report to HUD regarding our CDBG program. So real brief, really briefly, it won't be before you long. For fiscal year 2223, the city allocated $1.6 million in CDBG funding, and of that, 3,981 of our residents were served utilizing that funding. Of that, 513 was specific to public services, so those are funds that went directly to individual, individual residents of the community. And so our consolidated, or our CAPER is a report that just strictly reports to HUD how we met the goals of our consolidated plan. 202223 was the first year of our new consolidated plan, a five-year consolidated plan, and so we are just asking for your approval to submit our report to HUD as we report on our performance for the year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for a nice concise report. Colleagues, any comments before I open the public hearing? I will open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers on, public speakers on this matter?
No.
Okay, anyone wanting to speak at this time, please step forward. Saying none, close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Thank you for a motion and, and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. So that is all the business before this meeting this evening. We will adjourn in the memory of our beloved Matt Garcia and all that he meant and still means to this community. And Councilman Vacar, would you like to say some words on that?
Yeah, just, I mean, everything you just said, I think we all echo that. You know, Matt was a great young leader, sorely missed, I said this to the last meeting, and I know that, you know, a lot of us up here were, you know, were close to him and knew him really well, so, you know, all I can say is we miss him, but as the foundation always says, "Keep the dream alive." So, thank you.
And on that word, we will say goodnight, and thank you all. Have a nice evening.